All right.
Now I'm ready.
Thanks AJ. I'm gonna call the Springfield City Council Work Session to Order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts, Mo, Rodley.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
Conditioner.
Here, thank you.
All right, we have two items to this evening. First is 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Program, a Community Reinvestment Plan with Jeff Pascal.
Thank you Mayor Van Gordon, and good evening and happy new year to everyone else, including you Mayor, happy new year. Let's hope for a really great one, even though we started out with a heck of a rainstorm testing our stormwater system out there. So I'm sure I hear from Ops about some new projects that we may need here soon. Yeah, tonight I'm here to discuss the Capital Improvement Program, a Community Reinvestment Plan, commonly referred to as the CIP, because we love our acronyms. And the draft before you covers fiscal year 23 through fiscal year 27. My plan tonight is to try and quickly go through some background and highlight some of the changes. And then provide plenty of opportunity for council to ask questions and discuss. The CIP is a valuable planning tool to facilitate efficient use of capital resources. We utilize four kind of key criteria for prioritizing and selecting projects. You know, addressing our federal or regulatory requirements that are outlined in several of our permits and elsewhere. Maintain and repair and preserve our existing assets. And just for information, we have over 260 miles of existing roadway that we have jurisdiction over with all of the other things that go along with having roadways, sidewalks, ADA signals, two over 220 miles of wastewater pipe and 200 miles, over 200 miles of stormwater pipe. And that's just pipe, that's not counting all of the open channels, ponds, things like that. So the city has a lot of assets and I couldn't even pin a dollar figure on the value of that asset. So that is one of the things is making sure that we're identifying projects to replace facilities that have reached the end of their useful life before they fail. And in keeping things preserved and well maintained, so they last a lot longer. So we can make sure that those facilities reach their life expectancy. Second or third is to responding to council priorities and citizen requests. And then projects identified, we always look back to our long range plans that we have, our master plans such as wastewater and stormwater, to make sure that we're in line with planning and expanding and growing the system to meet the, all of the needs within the UGB. As you look at the CIP this year, you may have noticed that especially for those of you who have seen several CIPs, done some editing and changing up on how the project sheets look. So we still have four main areas. Stormwater, streets and transportation, wastewater and buildings and facilities. However, instead of continuing to keep project sheets, those detailed project sheets in each iteration of the CIP, once a project's programmed and budgeted, kind of pulled that sheet out, but I'm providing it a table, a list that shows what's the status of those projects that have shown up in past CIPs and are either completed or in some stage of completion, or you know, whether they're on hold. So if somebody wants to look at that and ask why is a project on hold, because we do have several projects on hold. And for various reasons, and then trying to provide notes there on, at least on that direction. And then looking at staffing resources and financial resources of what we can program. The, the projects that are proposed have a detailed project sheet that kind of shows what year their plan for programming and kind of a detailed scope and what the criteria and drivers for those projects are justification. And then lastly, we always had all these sheets in there, and I think it got a little hard to follow them. And they kept continuing because sometimes the funding doesn't show up, especially in streets and transportation, because we rely on a lot of grant funds. And so we'd keep projects in there so that we could, if an opportunity arose where a specific fund suddenly showed up that we could apply for and met the need, we had that project already with a council blessing of, yeah, this program's in, or this project's in a plan that's adopted by council. And so now we're showing a list of projects in the unfunded that have a, you know, brief synopsis and things like that. If we can, an estimated dollar amount. And then if, if a funding source, then we can bring and pull that in. But rather than go through the effort of putting a detailed project sheet or providing that confusion by having those in there. And so those are kind of, that's the big change as far as that. Also gone through the Reader's Guide there that, you know, for folks who, who are unfamiliar, the first time they're looking at it, the whole front end that kind of gives the explainer, the executive summary, we've kind of gone through and updated that quite a bit. The other attachments that you have in there are, the CIP was presented to the Planning Commission. They recommended it forwarded to the council for review and approval. And getting back to, one of the big concerns I heard from the Planning Commission was there were a lot of projects on hold. And, and some of that comes down to staffing resources. So when we pass the bond, when the citizens pass the bond and we, we have that money for streets and preservation, we kind of like shifted a lot of staffing focus to making sure we got those projects delivered on time. Not to mention we have, which is a good thing to have, we have a lot of transportation dollars flowing in through the MPO and elsewhere that we have time constraints on getting those projects moving. And so we are focused on those. We still, if you look through that, that list in the front of each section, there's a lot that we did get done with the staffing, but there are some projects on hold and some of them are on various stages of, of being moved forward. And then also you have a letter, a recommendation letter from the B-PAC. I didn't formally present the CIP to the B-PAC, but they did review it and they provided their kind of thoughts from the Bike Ped Committee and their thoughts on, on those types of projects and what's in there. And then lastly, you have a list of the citizen requests, and there's a lot of them. And some of them, the project, so I did note in there, there's an asterisk by some, I don't know how easy it is to see, but some of them have multiple requests for similar projects. And so wanted to provide that. I broke it into two sections because there were over 20 before I went to the Planning Commission. And then after the Planning Commission, even though it was kind of past the deadline for what we had to put in the social media and everything, I got, we had received more. So I still wanted to provide those to the council that they're on the list. Let's see, anything else? I, I think that about covers a lot of the background and the putting it together. Some of the highlights for projects that are new, we're really kind of focusing in, got some focus on wastewater, getting back to repair and preservation there, especially with, with the need to continue to tighten up our system. And so through some micro basin modeling and hydraulic modeling, which we've completed in advance for our, to, to work on the master plan. We've also been able to identify some systems, some base, small basins, which are showing high INR inflow and infiltration. And so we have those programs for the next couple of years. And then several, you'll see in the transportation section, several projects that are federally funded as well, such as Q Street is one example of that. And then also you'll note that we will, one project we will be receiving, we should, we anticipate receiving in the next, probably before the summertime, the $12 million from the state that was legislated for 42nd Street. And that was kind of contingent on getting the jurisdictional transfer done for Pioneer Parkway, which was approved by council last month.
Merrily. You're on mute Merrily. Does somebody else have questions while Merrily's getting, working through this? And AJ, I just got a text from Damian that he's trying to get in. So I don't know if you see him in the, in the list.
I will go find him.
All right, other question, Leonard?
Yep, thanks. Jeff, I, I didn't get a chance to watch, to read all of the citizen suggestions. Could you summarize, were there consistent suggestions on the part of the public on this five-year program?
So one thing I always say is, is interesting, we don't get a lot of wastewater and stormwater requests. And that's probably a good thing. That means we're not having a lot of wastewater backups and a lot of flooding issues. So everything's underground and taken care of. What we do get a lot of that's consistent is a lot that revolves around streets, transportation type requests. And I'm trying to jump to that section. I could have probably got my hard copy quicker. But we had a lot of requests for improvements to unimproved streets. You know, several, I, I don't have the exact number, but more than 10 for the section of Ninth Street in the Washburn Historic District between, I believe it's C and G Street is unimproved. Over 10 for that, but we also got some for Third, South Third and D Street, South Second. So several of those, some, some projects I'm just scanning through, we got some crossing upgrade projects, things like that, street preservation projects. So several streets like Fairhaven, I don't know how many of you have had a chance to go down Fairhaven, but Fairhaven is in pretty bad shape and it's, it's a collector street, but it's a neighborhood collector. So not norm, not really a commercial collector. So it wasn't really on our high priority list when we went out for the most recent bond effort, but it, it's in that collector. We have several of those that I can, you know, if you drive downtown, South G Street or G Street is a, is another one that is a community collector, E Street, those sorts, those sorts of streets that are due for preservation. And so we did get more requests for preservation. And I think some of that is spurred from our backlog, but also the fact that we were successful in the bond and then we're successful in getting all of those projects out in, in rapid succession. And so people are seeing paving going on and they're like, oh, that's really nice. I want to see that in my neighborhood. Some projects were already on the list working. Obviously we had Mill Street, you know, where's that at? So that's, that's in our CIP or it's actually budgeted. We've been working with ODOT for over two years now. We started that process in 2019, waiting for a notice to proceed for our consultant to start designing that project. Let's see, so like I said, some crossing project, signal upgrade projects. That's kind of, if we kind of let, think about every possible type of transportation, street project, we probably got one request.
Well, assuming that our wastewater treatment and our stormwater programs are not on the verge of catastrophic failure, which they don't seem to be based on the report, I, I'm more or less in line with the citizens' recommendations there. I, I know that there are lots of streets that need attention. I, I know the mayor and I both drive on Laura Street every day and that's certainly one that needs to be in line. Thanks.
Merrily.
I'm here. She whiz. Well, you partially answered my first question. That was regarding Mill Street. You realize that that is one of my pet projects. And, and we got an email from a person today regarding the Mill Street condition. And it's, I'd love to shake ODOT because it's been, you know, it's been two years. It's, it's a priority. It's really important to get that street done and it's, it's very frustrating. And I saw that there was 40,000 set aside for the initial workup and I just, you know, that's very frustrating for me.
Yeah, I want to say Christie and I were reviewing and working on consultant selection in, I want to say August or September and had made final selection and we're still waiting on that notice proceed. And so it's, it's been a, like I, when I see that kind of thing, it's like, yeah, I, I feel for the citizens who have to drive the road every day because we have staff who want to see the project move forward. And, and in these two-year delays like this, this also causes concern because we're seeing inflation. So missing time, mistiming could cause us some budgetary issues as we, you know, as we move through, wind our way through the whole project process and get through designs. Yes, we don't know what the economy is going to do in another year and a half, two years when we're able to put it out to bid.
Exactly, exactly. And my other, my other question was in regards to a, it seems to be this little forgotten area in Springfield between 51st and 54th Street and A to like G or F. That whole area there, there isn't a street there that's really passable. It, it, they're, they're all a mess. And I, we don't seem to end up getting them on the list anywhere. And I know that I may not make friends with this, but I would rather see something happen to those streets before we do any more with bike ped stuff. I just, those streets are atrocious. I don't know how to get them, you know, on the list to get them looked at, but they're just a mess. And, and they, and they continue to get worse.
Yeah. You know, a lot of what we've done for bike ped has been successful through grants. And so, yeah, and so the ones, you know, like 54th Street, we could probably get on some sort of list for it because it's a collector street. And that's typically state and federal money has to be on our system that is collector and above, not local.
How about one that's in front of the school? 51st is in front of the school.
No, I, I hear you. We have a long list and it's just, it's that we're back to that. You know, we, we've done really good things. We got, we were successful. The citizens proved the bond and we were able to get those projects on the street. And now we're kind of back to facing that, trying to find funding to continue having, you know, of kind of a robust or a very healthy preservation program. So we went from not having one to being able to get some good projects out in front of everybody. And I, I will say, we have been taking the 150,000 that the council wanted to put towards slurry seal. We did get several miles of roads slurry sealed on the local side. So now that helps us on the roads that try to keep those local streets from falling into disrepair. But it's, it's, at least it's getting us so that we're maintaining the roads that are in decent shape or that good or, you know, and not letting them, not letting our backlog grow, which is one, two aspects. You're trying to help that backlog and address it while not letting more fall into that category. And so it's a really fine balance when you have finite funds.
Right. Now I understand and I preach, and I was, I was being a tad facetious when I said bike bed because I know where. I was trying to make a nice contrast there. Sometimes being able to get from the end of the street to your driveway is really helpful if you live on 54th or 51st. So it just, it, it's a very forgotten area of Springfield because there's nothing that really there except residences and a very, very quiet neighborhoods and, and, but, but the streets are a mess. So.
Yeah. And I think some of the attention this year, because we did, you know, normally I hear two or three comments about unimproved streets and, and what's the process for getting those improved, which the, the past practice policy by the city council and, and the staff is, it's in the local improvement district, which is an accessible project if it's an unimproved street. And I think some of the attention has been get, we're getting more attention there because we are out, we're able to get contractors out doing a lot of paving the last 18 months. And so now folks are going, well, if they're paving that street, they must have money to pave, you know, other streets and improve those. And, and so.
So AJ.
Thank you.
I see Steve in the attendee list, if you want to snag him. Corey?
I thought maybe Counselor Woodrow was talking about the bike ped stuff, just to sort of serve up my comments about. It's like, oh, look, just, she's trying to serve up a little controversy, but no, I really, first of all, I appreciate this. This is my first time kind of getting to see, go through this and having had lots of folks reach out to me personally throughout the past year and ask about Ninth Street and such, it's really great to see where they are. And I'm, I'm appreciating this process a lot. And I just wanted to take a few moments just because I have a bias because it's one of the, the committees that I serve as a liaison for, and that's the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And have been able to attend their meetings and their subcommittee meetings and just appreciate if you didn't get a chance to see their letter, because I know they did a lot of work in terms of looking at citywide and, and sort of forward thinking, not just about where things are now, but where, you know, where do they need to be? And so I just appreciate that sort of involvement by volunteers and residents who are thinking about, how do, how do we make it safer for our kids and families and people to get around, not in cars and people in cars? Because you know, if it's safer for pedestrians and bicycles, it's also, we have improved the safety across the board. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to say I appreciate all of the engagement and know that a big focus for those folks is on West D Street. And I know Counselor Mo and I were both at their most recent meeting and kind of digging into where, what we can do now and what we can maybe do in the future. So that's all. Thanks.
Yeah. And to their top, one of their projects on the top, another project was Laura Street on their top of the list, right? And so one of the things we're trying to do, because the county's already improving their section of Laura Street, the council authorized jurisdictional transfer and the counties move forward with monies that they receive through the MPO to upgrade theirs. And so one of the things we're trying to do to help offset some of our staffing shortage resources for managing new projects and work together is we're going to try and work with the county. There's money flowing through the MPO potentially that we can get. And we're going to try and get the rest of the city's portion funding for that. And then just tag on to the county since they're already managing that project to kind of alleviate some of those issues and get one of the projects knocked off of their list and off of the city's list. I mean, frankly, getting the rest of the city's portion upgraded as well is, has been on the list since I've been at the city. So, which doesn't seem that long ago, but it really has been when I think back.
So Jeff, when citizens are coming in and I looked at the list and some of them have an answer for them, are, are you closing the loop with those folks and saying, hey, look, that's got federal funds? Or hey, I got it on, you know, it's on the list or that maybe there's a policy question involved in that?
That is my plan. I have not, I, I can confess, I have not had an opportunity to connect back with each person or send an email back, but especially like you see some of there where it's a customer service request for like a light that's out or something like that, that is a maintenance operations type thing. I want to let them know that we are just go ahead and submitting that as staff submitting a CSR. That's not like sending it back to them, hey, you need to submit a CSR, but we can internally do that. So my plan is to have staff kind of reach back out. Here's what we, we do know. Here's the status. Some projects are already in the CIP. So that is my plan to make sure and connect the loop. I have connected with a couple of folks who have sent me direct emails and phone calls, but I haven't had a chance to, to make sure, get a response out to everybody.
And if those are unimproved streets, right, that are going to require a local improvement district, just because they're in the CIP, doesn't mean that they're, that that sort of policy is changing, right? We still are having that conversation with them, correct?
So I want to, so we're not putting those projects in the CIP, at least unless council wants to direct that. So typically those wouldn't come into the CIP unless the C, unless an LID was initiated. And I, you know, it is a process and it's, it's a, it has to be a citizen, typically it's a citizen driven process to get an LID, a setting aside the Crest Lane, which was kind of staff initiated due to, you know, a hazardous condition. But typically they're citizen driven, you know, gathering signature type of initiatives. And, and we've walked, I, I've talked to several of those folks in the past on Ninth Street who have requested because they've, they've come in a couple of times when we've walked through the LID process. But no, those projects wouldn't go in the CIP, but I just let them know that I would make sure that all of the citizen requests, especially the ones who called me directly or emailed me, that they would be, that the council would see that there was a request, whether it was going into the CIP or not, there was no commitment on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And oh, the last question I had was about the Mill Street Plaza, which is in the downtown plan. And I don't know, and it's been in there for, I don't know, probably 20 years. And I, and I don't know if we're going to, like, if we need to, if it would be helpful to pull back and have a conversation to see whether or not we're even pursuing that, because I've heard different discussions about buildings among the council table.
Yeah. So I haven't had a chance to go through every, so I just didn't want to, what, what's happened to me in the past is when we've like, okay, this has been here for a while and I think, or somebody thinks it should be pulled out, then we pull it out and somebody goes, what happened to that project? So I haven't had a chance to circle back with everybody, you know, to have that full collaborative on every project, but I have flagged several. That is one of those that is there. There's a couple on the transportation and there's a cup, actually several in a, in each category that I think maybe that the time has passed for those projects, but I haven't had a chance to make sure we connect everybody as staff to, to pull those out. And so you might, that's why you might not see them in the actual proposed projects for the next five years, but they're in that unfunded, unprogrammed category for the time being.
When, when you're ready, and I know that the CIP is an effort on, on its own, but when you're ready and you've got a list that you want us to talk about, I will, I'm definitely supportive of coming back for another like 15-minute work session for you to go. I'm pulling all these out. What do you guys think?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Steve. You're on mute, Steve. Steve, you're stolen. There you go.
I know. I have to, I have, I've run around my butt. Okay, back when the federal courthouse was a, was a possibility down in Island Park, that's when the Mill Street Plaza really became interesting to people. And so I think it was sort of put in place then, the federal courthouse went someplace else, Mill Street Plaza is still probably not as much interest now. That's all.
Yep. All right. Anybody else for questions or comments on CIP before we let Jeff, Jeff go? All right, Jeff, thank you very much. We appreciate the update.
Thank you much, and I'll see you on the 18th for the public hearing.
Perfect. And the next person that we have is we have Chief Shear presenting on an update for policies. I think it's the drone update, the implementation update for SUAS. Chief, take it away. I know you have a presentation. Do you want questions during the presentation? Or you want to fly through that and then open it up for some discussion?
If we could hold the questions to the end, that'd be best. I'm going to do a brief introduction and I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Kittle, who's going to basically be doing the presentation. Then we'll both tag team the question and answer session at the end.
Perfect.
So thanks for your time tonight. Appreciate it. Over the past several months, we've developed the capability SPD to deploy small unmanned aerial systems, something that's also known as drones. So the use of that technology for first responders specifically has been occurring nationally and around Oregon successfully in recent years. During the inception of these programs, there was a range of concerns that have been raised by communities all over the place. And the issues included concerns related to privacy and constitutional considerations, potential liability, SUAS as may pose, related to injury or rights violations. There's talk about weaponization of drones and perceived lack of oversight. So as a result of all these questions that have come up in years past, there's been state legislation passed right here in Oregon that's going to guide our program. The drawback for us remaining on the sidelines for the last several years is we have not been able to deploy this technology to the benefit of the Springfield community. And some of those benefits include vehicle accident reconstruction and crime scene investigations. Something that's critically important, the active support during vehicle or foot pursuits, or oftentimes the, the apprehension of dangerous subjects. In the last few months, we've collaborated very closely with the city attorney's office to develop draft policy and a citywide operations manual. And the philosophy that drives our policy and procedures for this technology is based on respect for privacy and civil liberties and the mission to protect life and property and to improve overall safety by enhancing situation awareness for our officers that are out there on the street every day. What we're asking for today is just some of your time and to provide us input and questions on the program. So with that, I will turn it over to Sergeant Kittle.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody on City Council. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Sergeant Brian Kittle and I'm the unit supervisor for the Springfield Police Department's drone team. Today I'm here to talk about the exciting opportunity to start our drone program for the city of Springfield. And then at the end, I'll open it up for some questions. So we'll go ahead and get started here. So a drone is a small unmanned aerial system. It's an unmanned aircraft of any type weighing less than 55 pounds that's capable of directed flight. It's an unmanned aircraft of any type weighing less than 55 pounds that's capable of directed flight, remotely controlled and designed for gathering information through imaging, recording, lighting, and even communication. Drones range in size from smaller than a cell phone to large fixed wing planes. And costs can vary from a few hundred dollars for hobby drones up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more for high-end technologically advanced drones. They're used by police, fire, EMS, utilities, search and rescue, military, cinematographers, hobbyists, and more. The technology is rapidly developing and provides advanced techniques in investigations, rescue operations, de-escalation, incident response, personnel safety, inspections, surveillance, and more. The drones are quickly becoming mainstream and are being adopted by agencies all over the US and the world. They provide significant officer and community safety benefits, allowing for intelligence to be gathered without the need for officers to be up close. Drones can fly inside high-risk locations, minimizing risk to personnel. And they can expedite crash and crime scene processing with 3D modeling technology. They can expedite and supplement personnel during loss or missing persons or children by providing an aerial view and offering thermal imaging. And the drones can provide a point of view that can only be achieved with an aircraft, either unmanned or otherwise. So what's our philosophy? The operation of the drone has the potential to leverage the resources available to the city of Springfield staff to inform actions and find the efficiencies in many departments. This far-reaching technology may be used to protect the lives and property of citizens and first responders, enhance situational awareness during emergency response, inspect facilities, assets, infrastructure, and natural resources, and enhance services provided to the community. Regardless of the nature of the mission, the safety is our primary concern in each and every operation. It's the responsibility of every participating city of Springfield employee to contribute to the goal of continued safe drone operations. This contribution may come in many forms and includes always operating in a legal and safe manner while avoiding unnecessary risks. And all participants engaged in the operation of the drone have a responsibility to identify and mitigate any potential safety hazards related to the procedures, operations, or maintenance before an incident even occurs. The city of Springfield is committed to providing the best services possible to our community. And the drone will always be operated in a constitutionally and legally sound manner that respects and protects the privacy and civil liberties of all. This means avoiding unneeded and unintended operations of drones and includes thoughtful consideration for personal privacy and public perception at all times. Some common uses in policing. Well, police agencies around the country are finding that drones are enhancing their ability to be more efficient and safer for officers and citizens. Drones are a significant de-escalation tool, allowing police to get eyes on a volatile situation without having to actually have a uniformed officer be present. EPD recently had a call of a suicidal subject threatening suicide near a city park. The drone was able to get observation of the subject and relay to officers that the subject was not actually armed. And when the subject volunteered to surrender, the drone pilot was able to provide updates that the subject was unarmed. And information like this de-escalates a situation and reduces the intensity that's brought to an incident. The potential use cases are nearly endless with more and more being explored every day. So when can the drones be used? This is pretty important for everybody. I'm sure it's a major concern. So the state of Oregon passed legislation nearly 10 years ago placing strict guidelines on the use of drones by law enforcement. The Springfield Police Department will adhere to those laws in utilizing the drones. They can only be flown when there is a valid search warrant authorizing use. If there is probable cause to believe that a person has committed a crime, is committing a crime or about to commit a crime, and exigent circumstances exist that make it unreasonable to obtain a warrant. They can also be used with written consent from an individual property owner for purposes of gathering information about that property or as part of a search and rescue activity. And also when assisting on the individuals in an emergency, if there's reasonable belief there is imminent threat to the life and safety of a person. They're also used for crime scene reconstruction or other criminal investigations and for purposes of training with the drones. The city drone policy will be made available for public viewing on our city's website. And the Springfield Police Department will also adhere to all FAA regulations relating to the drone use. Prohibited uses by law enforcement. It's the city's intent to use these drones effectively and appropriately with considerations also being given to privacy concerns. We want the community to understand that the drones cannot be used to conduct random surveillance of people or property. They also cannot be used to conduct patrol operations without a warrant or exigency that a crime is being committed or about to be committed. State law and city policy strictly prohibit the use of the drones for these activities. And additionally, it's important to understand that Oregon state law specifically states that the drones cannot be weaponized. So addressing some community concerns, we understand that the community will likely have concerns about their personal property, privacy, and police use of the drones for crowd monitoring. We have policies in place that protect people's individual rights. The use of drones for crowd monitoring has to fall within one of the legal allowed use cases described. Again, that means we need a warrant first or probable cause that a person has committed a crime, is committing a crime or about to commit a crime, and exigent circumstances exist that make it unreasonable to obtain a warrant. Drone use for crowd control situations is a powerful public safety tool. The overhead view allows the department to observe traffic flows and potential hazards. The department is better able to observe potential conflicts, identify aggressors, and respond appropriately. In the event of a violent incident, officers have better information about who is involved and how to make the gathering safe. It's also important to know that anytime during a crowd management deployment, that the legal authority to fly dissipates, the flight will be discontinued and the drone will be landed. As a team, we'll be constantly evaluating the incident and our legal authority to fly to ensure that we are in compliance with our state laws. So what's recorded and when? The current guidelines and standards within the law enforcement industry are that recording is only done when there is a possibility of evidentiary value, such as during an incident, an investigation, a high-risk incident, crime scene documentation, and more. It is up to the pilot to record based on department policy or at the direction of a supervisor. And all video retention is done in accordance with all of our established city and department policies on video retention, such as our body worn cameras and our in-car video policies. This is just an example here that you're seeing of drone use. And as it pans out, you'll see some officers in the area here. So how are they deployed? The deployment of a drone on scene can be done easily and very quickly. They can be launched from most ground locations, rooftops, and open spaces. The equipment is stored at the police department for security, but the pilots will have their drones with them in their patrol car during their shifts. There are different ways to set up the equipment in the car, making transport, access, and deployment a simplified process. The drones have flight times that can range from 15 to 30 minutes and up to one mile or greater in distance from the launch location. The pilots operate the drones with a controller and can use various video displays such as the controller itself, a cellphone or a tablet, computer monitor, or even a TV. Additionally, there are even software platforms that provide secure live streaming capability to a command post, supervisor, or even officers on scene, which can maximize the effectiveness of our resources. So the current SPD drone team, it consists of two pilots currently, and that's including myself as the unit supervisor. A pilot referred to as the pilot in command is the drone operator who is certified under the FAA Part 107 licensing, approved by unit supervisor who has met specified requirements of knowledge, training, and operational proficiency. The pilot is directly responsible for the safety and operation of the drone during any and all operations. The unit supervisor is responsible for the overall direction and performance of the department drone program. This includes record keeping and reporting, contact with the FAA, reviewing and updating the program policies and procedures as needed, evaluating the drones based on case uses and replacement needs, monitoring the drone community to ensure best practice, best safety practices are incorporated into the city's use and operations, and establishing a review process to monitor the program's objectives, the air crew member performance, and the proficiency and use of the drone. LIDA is the Law Enforcement Drone Association. LIDA was established here in the Pacific Northwest and is quickly growing nationally. LIDA is establishing standards and best practices for the standardization of drone use in the United States and abroad. And SPD pilots are currently members of the LIDA organization, and we attend regional training days as well as an annual conference in Bend, Oregon. So what do we currently have? Right now we have four DEGAI brand drones, drones of both small, medium, and large sizes. Inspired Drone, that's this big white one with the propellers kind of raised up. It's to give some perspective, it's about 18 inches by 18 inches. While the smallest drone that we have is literally the size of a large cellphone. All of our current drones were acquired through donation from both private party and other law enforcement agencies. The technology we have is about five to seven years old, but it still has a capability to assist in several areas, but with some limitations. They provide for both day or night flight capabilities equipped with FLIR or forward-looking infrared imaging. They cannot fly in the wet weather and they have very limited flight times. They do offer really good camera qualities though, one with thermal imaging capability and can be used both indoor and outdoor. Our upfront cost so far has been almost zero for being able to start a drone program. So some pilot training proficiency, before an air crew member can function as a pilot, they'll be required to successfully complete the FAA's Part 107 drone certification. Additionally, they'll complete a 40-hour flight training program in-house to demonstrate knowledge of and operational requirements and proficiency of the drone. For ongoing training, the pilots will continue to train with Eugene Police Department's drone team monthly and individually trained regularly. The training programs encompass a variety of important topics to include scenarios based on real events, equipment familiarization, emergency safety procedures, state and federal regulations, deployment procedures and expectations, and maintenance, repair, and storage of the equipment, navigation, and weather. The pilots learn to effectively operate the equipment, navigate both wide open and closed space areas, and coordinate resources and identify hazards. The unit supervisor will have the responsibility for maintaining copies of all of our FAA certifications, the expiration dates, training records, flight logs, maintenance records, and all the FAA and Oregon State registration. The current plan is to utilize Air Data, which is a flight logging software to maintain all equipment and pilot records and our flight logs. This is a subscription service that's commonly used by other agencies for centralized data collection and reporting. The flight data recording provides access to detailed drone operations, which can be utilized for addressing complaints or concerns about SPD drone use, privacy concerns, et cetera. The details recorded include flight patterns, elevation, speed, direction, and more. Drone identification, the FAA and state registration numbers will be adhered to the drones as required by state and federal law. And the drones will display obvious visible features identifying them as Spring, City of Springfield property. And these markings may appear as colored labels, stickers, or coverings we commonly call skins on the drones themselves. So emergency procedures are specific to each drone type as designed by the manufacturer. Many drones have a number of failsafe options in the event of signal loss or performance problems. These include the setting of a home location, a return to home elevation setting, automated hover, or even a return to home mode. Our current policy specifically details procedures for drone recovery or mishaps such as equipment failure or accident reporting. Pilots will take any necessary precautions to minimize any risk to people or property in the event a drone has to be landed unexpectedly. So future goals. The current drone technology provides the opportunity to fly in various weather and lighting conditions with longer flight times, up-to-date zoom and thermal imaging technology, stronger and more secure platforms for controlling the drones from greater distances, and collaborative technology to work with systems such as our current Pharaoh scanner for investigating major crime scenes or fatal traffic crashes. These types of drones vary in cost from $500 up to $30,000. And some of the advanced capabilities include speaker systems for communicating, spotlights for illumination, advanced FLIR technology, and even obstacle avoidance sensors. Looking ahead for us, the Eugene Police Department has provided a tremendous amount of training, guidance, program development, and drone deployment assistance to the Springfield Police Department over the past year. We're currently working together towards establishing a metro drone team. This collaborative effort will provide a greater number of pilots available to assist either city, give access to a larger range of equipment for very specialized use, and development of consistent training and deployment techniques. To date, we've been able to acquire our entire fleet at no cost, thanks to donations. However, in order to achieve the level of success other agencies are having, there is a wide range of investment opportunities for the city. They're not immediate priorities for us, and there are other avenues of acquisition that will continue to be explored, such as purchasing used equipment or applying for grants. An expectation of future costs for equipment can range from 500 to 30, $500 to $30,000 with annual expenses that can range from $3,000 to $5,000 per year. So DFR stands for Drone as a First Responder. DFR programs are now starting to pop up across the country, but they're still in the very early stages. These programs bring the concept of air support to agencies that could never afford a helicopter or an airplane. The DFR model is built around very fast deployment of a drone to a call that is in progress to provide real-time information to responding officers. EPD and Bend PD are both working towards the goal of going live with their first DFR programs within the state of Oregon in 2022. Data storage is obviously a long-term concern, and it's one that we'll have to be intentional about here at the PD. With the current systems in place, we should be able to absorb the added data. Live streaming is also a very valuable tool, and there are a range of options for live streaming from the drone to any secure device made available by the drone team, such as to an incident commander, the command post, a rescue team, or officers on scene when applicable. So that's what I've got for today. I just want to take a moment to thank City Council, City Manager, the City Attorney's Office, and Chief Shear. I do appreciate the opportunity to present on this exciting opportunity, and I'm thankful for the time I was provided to present the information on our program to each of you and to our communities. So with that, I'd like to open it up for questions or turn it back over to Chief Shear.
Joe.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. I mean, I'm sorry, Brian. Hey, that's an inside joke. Great presentation, Brian. Appreciate it. A lot of good information. I had a couple of questions on the, in regards to response you wrote on that bomb slash hazmat. And I guess that kind of hedges on the potential for response to weapons of mass destruction. Do those, do those drones, or is there ability for those drones to snag on to as an accessory of a sniffing capability to sniff the environment, I assume?
So I, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. Did you say sniffing or snipping?
Sniff as far as air quality, environmental concerns, as far as potential for hazardous environment without putting personnel in there.
Yeah. So good question. So not currently that I'm aware of. Is there any kind of an aromatic attachment that they can, they can use to get down close? They are already being used with their Zoom technology, where we don't have to worry about radio frequency interference if it's going to activate a device. But with the Zoom technology, the drone cameras are able to get right up on it and, and look at very specific details of whatever the device may, may be. And provide that to the incident commanders or the officers who are evaluating it. So in terms of diffusing a device, that technology is not currently there. They do have the, what we call payload capability. So there are larger drones that you can attach things to that you might, and I'm just thinking hypothetically here, you could create some kind of a cover or dome to cover a device if that was a concern. But not for checking for like aerosol or anything like that. But the Zoom technology is, is the biggest thing that is used for identifying risk from suspicious devices.
Thank you. And on our second question is that do any of our units have FLIR capability? Or is that something that you're looking forward to getting?
We do, we do have a drone, one of our Inspires, that has FLIR capability. I recently attended a conference in Bend, Oregon several months back. And in networking with some of the leaders in the industry at the LIDA conference, I met with some of the lieutenants and sergeants that were in the drone program in Bend, and they, we had a frank conversation. And they, we had a frank conversation about what limited capabilities we had. And they were gracious enough to donate a, a camera and a drone that they are not using because they've made some significant upgrades over the year. And it was a huge step for us. So we do now have good quality thermal imaging. It, it's outfitted for an older drone, but the, the imaging quality is absolutely amazing.
Oh, great. So for people searches at low, low light conditions, we, we have that capability?
Absolutely, yes.
Great. Then last question is that can someone tell me what is the estimated total annual program cost would include training and equipment updates?
So I, I'm going to put it out there, the, the number I'm throwing out is in the probably three to five thousand dollars per year. That could be a little bit high to start just because there's only two of us and we have limited a, a, equipment. But some of those costs would mean like maintenance or replacing propellers, motors, batteries, things like that. But a lot of the cost can come from, for example, like live data streaming or data recording. So Air Data again is one of those platforms that I, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to tap into. And it's a very important program that tracks, you know, movement of our drones, all of our maintenance records, flight logs for aircrew members. And so there's a cost associated with that. But then when you get into live streaming platforms, your cost goes up per drone. But I would estimate we're going to be somewhere in the three to five thousand dollars per year annually.
So, but that's not including the training though, is it?
Well, we've done a pretty good job so far with, since there's only two of us, we do our training on our workdays when staffing allows, or we do trade days for when we're short. We do it here in town. There has been a, a cost for attending like conferences, those can be a few hundred dollars per person, and that's once a year. So really, we, we've done a pretty good job. It's been pretty minimal so far.
Sounds like it. I knew that someone's going to ask that, so I thought I would.
Yeah, no question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Great presentation. I, I, I support this program a hundred and fifty percent.
Thank you, sir.
Leonard.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Chair and Officer Kittle for this presentation. I was wondering, have any of these four drones that are in the force been deployed today?
They have only been used in training purposes. We have not activated any of our drones for an active incident for the city of Springfield.
Okay. I see that there would be a provision for using one for either a warrant or probable cause. If, let's say, for instance, that I, I owned a house where you suspected some illegal conduct was taking place and you didn't get a warrant, what, what would constitute probable cause for deploying the drone over my house?
So obviously, if we're talking about flying it over the house, I'm, I'm visualizing that the drone is specifically over your property, but with camera technology, we can fly them from great distances and, and look into a specific property. But to just fly the drone in general, we, we would have to meet those very specific standards that a crime has already been committed, is being committed or is about to be committed in order to have that exigency to view on your property without your consent or without a warrant. So that would be largely dependent on the information gathering that we would do on any other call for service while we're on bike patrol or on foot or in a patrol car. So each one would be circumstance-specific.
So, so the standard would be either a crime having already been committed or is imminent?
Correct.
Okay. The, the, on, on the crowd monitoring issue, under what circumstances would the force be considering using a drone in a crowd situation?
So again, it would fall under the exact same guidelines as the example you just asked for. So just the fact that a crowd is gathering, if we were going to have an organized gathering or protest or something at City Hall, is not enough to just fly the drone. We have to have information very specific that says a crime has been committed. We already have a search warrant where there's exigency, exigency that it's being committed. So to provide you with an example, there was a demonstration a few months back down at the Planned Parenthood, actually. A group was gathering, we had EPD's drone team available for assistance. And this crowd grew for quite some time, and it wasn't until the moment that we had somebody actually report to us that a criminal mischief and disorderly conduct incident had occurred. There was a vehicle operator passing through and a subject stepped out and smashed their window in the road, or I'm sorry, the, the mirror in, in the roadway. And so it wasn't until that, we had that information that we knew we could fly the drone. So the drone went up. We got an aerial view of the crowd that had gathered. We actively were searching for the person that we believe to be responsible for having committed that crime. And we got information that this person was moving this way or that way. And ultimately, when we were not able to locate that person, both with the resources that were available on the ground or with the drone team, and it kind of ran its course, we cannot keep the drone in the air just to maintain observation of the people that are there. So while the crime gave us the ability to put the drone into the air, when that comes and goes, when it runs its course, it does not alleviate the need to land the drone when it is over. So we understand that, that, that those are the requirements. So when it has dissipated, we are no longer investigating a crime. We are expected and required to land the drone until the next incident occurs.
So to an extent, the deployment of the drone would be dependent on the officer's inability to investigate or pursue a a perpetrator in a, in a crowd situation?
Correct. Sure, that's, that's a good way of putting it. Yeah, that's an example of it. Yeah. Now, obviously, if, if we were getting information that somebody dropped a suspicious device in the middle of one of these crowd gatherings, that's an officer's, or I'm sorry, that's a community safety concern. And depending on the information provided about that device, that there may be enough there to put the drone in the air to try and locate that thing out of concern for public safety. But again, say somebody finds it and they're like, oh, it's a lunch bag. It confirmed there's a sandwich. We can't keep the drone up and just keep monitoring a crowd. We would then have to reset. And, and to make it clear, this even applies with training. So in a training scenario, if we have an organized training afternoon, and we set up a scenario, we, we put our, a subject out there and we're practicing locating somebody in the woods, and we happen to observe a real crime occur while we're in training, even in that circumstance, any, any evidence that was found during the training scenario that led to the discovery that a crime had occurred cannot even be used. So we would effectively have to land the drone. And then obviously, if, if there's a safety concern, we still relay the information so we can handle it on the ground. But just being in training, we can't go out and look, we can't go patrol, we can't explore and try and find crimes that are occurring, and there's not enough there.
Great. Just one last question. I, I am getting some questions from constituents related to privacy and Fourth Amendment issues on the, on the drones. Would it be possible for the department to formulate a policy that would establish parameters for the use of drones in Springfield?
Yes, and we have already done that, and we have sent this over to the city attorney's office, and it's been reviewed, and that draft is currently in existence, so we're just waiting on final approval, but that is addressed in that policy.
In fact, in attachment, Leonard.
Thank you.
Cory.
Thank you. And I will probably be sort of customarily sloppy and messy because I, I don't even really know all the questions I want to ask. I think, one, I appreciate this presentation because I think that I am like a lot of folks in that I am, I am conflicted. Because I don't know what I don't know, and I think, and this is of course being presented by you all who have been working on this, and I appreciate the focus on policy. And what I would like to know is for some municipalities that have already, are already working with these drones, what are the problems? What are the things that have happened that do not, that, that do not fit tightly within the policy of what we have predicted? Because what's happening in my head is I am anticipating what those could be. And even though we may have policy to say we only use it under these circumstances, and we only use it because of this, and we're paying attention to law, I know that law changes. And I know that depending on, you know, situations and depending on climate, things shift and change, and we have humans and we have human error. So for me, going forward, I would love to, to hear like what has happened, what kind of court cases have happened? What, what, what has happened that has, has gone awry so that we can think about that? And I'm sure you've probably thought about that in the policy. The only other thing that I want to say is, this is one of those situations where I really would love to hear from my neighbors. I want to hear from people in Springfield. I am hoping that people will pay attention and read it and say, here's how I feel about this, or here's what I think about this, or here's my concerns. Because I think that even though, you know, I don't really feel fully understand what, what kind of power I have over this or what we have as a, as a, as a council. I do think that we should be moving forward if we're going to move forward as a, as a city. And I want to know where people are on that. So those are the two things, the two messy things in my head are like, I, I want to know what could and has gone wrong. And I want to hear from my neighbors in terms of how they're feeling about it. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so I'll try and, if, if I miss the point here, just come back to me, but I'll, I'll try and hit both of those. But just to provide an example of some, some roadblocks, either concerns or things that have gone wrong that have been addressed by other agencies that are flying. We'll use privacy as an example. So the use of platforms like, say, Air Data came into use to address things like complaints. So maybe a citizen sees the drone flying overhead because we're operating during a major incident and we're looking for a, a, a subject in the, in a neighborhood. But, but obviously, we don't put that out over the air of every single thing that we're doing. So somebody could essentially come out into their backyard, see a drone flying, and maybe they take exception to that, and they, and they're under the assumption or the, the impression for them is that they're being spied on or watched by the police department or any other agency, and they may call and complain, and the, and these are things that have happened. What the technology that we currently have and the platforms that are available out there can do is mitigate some of those complaints. Because just like with body cameras or the GPS, the ABL systems in our patrol cars, when the drones are flown, all of that digital imprint is recorded on the device or on the platform or, or whatever we're using at the time. And we can go back literally and say, the, the drone, we, one, we can say it wasn't our drone because we didn't have any in the air. Or if we did, we can identify its exact flight pattern. We can say it was, yes, it was over your, maybe within one or two houses of your residence, and that explains why you would have seen it, but we know it was flying in an opposite direction. Or we have evidence in the camera recordings that's showing it was facing the opposite direction from your residence. So those technologies give us the, the opportunity to mitigate some of those complaints or address some of those concerns. Other things that have happened, obviously, with the development of these programs are equipment failure. And one of the common equipment failures is either like a motor or, or a battery. And so that's why our policy requires that our, our drone team and the pilots specifically are required to check all of their equipment before it's even put up. So there are certain guidelines provided by the manufacturers of things that we need to look for, that the propellers are in good condition, that the maintenance records are up to date, that the batteries are current and of charged capability. And then we also have built-in safety features, like when the drone experiences a problem, it's designed to return to the, the takeoff location. We call it a return-to-home. Or another common problem is signal loss. So with some of the older drones, if it flies too far, the, the frequency, the digital frequency from the controller to the, the drone itself could become disconnected, or there could be some interference. And so the drones now are designed to go into a hover mode so that it doesn't, they don't just fly around randomly. But again, the software gives us the capability of seeing exactly what it did, where it went, how fast, for how long, so that we can address all those things. In terms of, like, I, I love that you're saying you, you want to talk to your neighbors about it and address this, because I do too. So I can tell you from experience, I, Merrily Woodrow knows me from being on the, on the K-9 team for most of my career. I worked three dogs here. And one of the biggest things I found in my entire career that I'm so proud of was our ability to take our K-9 program, which in some states or, you know, other areas, people, people are afraid of dogs. But, but here, we have done so many community outreach events with our demonstrations here at the police department, at schools, open houses, the, the K-9 competition at, at Silky Field. And those are opportunities for us to have face-to-face contact with large groups of people that can come up with any number of questions. And it's conversational, and they get to see the equipment, hold the equipment. We can demonstrate the equipment. They can see how they are flown, what they're capable of, and it just, it helps bridge the gap. And so, not to go off too far on a tangent, but my intention with this program would be to, to use those same opportunities, but with the drones. I'm still involved with the K-9. We still do open houses here at the PD, and moments like that are, are invaluable in letting us say, hey, we want you to know about it. We want you to come ask questions. Come look at it. I'll, I'll show it. And I think we can really bridge the gap and answer a lot of questions that way.
Perfect. Steve?
When, I'm, I think drones are wonderful. It's going to be a, a new tool, and it's, it's technology as we go into the future. But I'm really, I really want to be careful how the people perceive how we're using these things and what they're for. And under addressing community concerns, you have the term crowd monitoring, which is passive. You didn't use that. You used crowd control when you talked about that, which is almost aggressive, assertive. And I, I think crowd monitoring should be stressed. And so crowd control is probably not a good word.
Sure, I can appreciate that. And I, I think in my notes, I actually used both kind of interchangeably, but I definitely am receptive to how that's perceived. And I think control, crowd control, because I understand the concern, is largely surrounding like providing information where we may have to block streets to prevent traffic from coming in or redirect resources to a different area. But yes, crowd monitoring, obviously, I could see how that was received.
That is the term you used in the presentation.
Sure, yeah. Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Damien.
Hey, y'all. Happy New Year. Thanks. So I'll start by saying, so when I was deployed, we used drones, and I saw how it kept not only us alive, but also civilians. And so in a lot of ways, it was a good thing, but it also caused a lot of problems. And so I have a list of questions. I'll try to condense them. So my first question is, okay, you mentioned that they couldn't fly in rain, and it rains a hell of a, too much in Oregon. And so I'm curious, what will be the return when the weather is normally bad? It seems like potentially you'll only be able to use these in the summer, or it will be limited, so the worth won't be there. And then on, to add to that, what type of assessment will be done every month, six months a year to determine if this is something that the city of Springfield needs to keep or expand? That's, that's my first question.
Yeah, those, those are great. So in regards to the equipment operating and weather conditions, we are limited with what we currently have. So I went out and tried to procure the equipment that we currently have. It is used equipment. It's donated from private party and from other agencies. And so it's a little bit older technology. So the drones that we have currently are not capable of flying in the rain. And that is a concern, but the bottom line is, if it's raining, I can't fly it. But we're working on this collaborative effort with Eugene Police, and they have upgraded equipment as a lot of the other agencies in the state of Oregon do that are capable of flying in the rain. There are weatherproof IP six sixty-five rated drones that are capable of operating in, in, in those conditions. We would, if we needed them, we would reach out just in any other mutual aid request to EPD and see if they could use their drone to assist us in whatever that situation may be. But ideally, you know, even though we all probably agree it does But ideally, you know, even though we all probably agree it does rain a lot here, it doesn't typically rain constantly for hours and hours or days and days on end. It feels like that to us. But I've worked out in the field long enough to know that sometimes you just have to wait for a break in the weather, and then you could put the drone up effectively, use it for whatever that window of time would be. And then if it starts to come back, you just you just down the drone, or we just don't fly because it's not safe or the or the equipment just can't do it. My hope is, long term, we can acquire that equipment that gives us that capability, so we're not limited to fair weather. But I could tell you right now, if I could use it just a limited amount of time, that's so far more than what I'd been able to use it previously. So I'm looking forward to having any little advantage we can to keep the community safe and our officers safe. And then if I rambled on too long, please forgive me, I forgot what the second question was.
It it was about the assessment to see how beneficial these pieces of equipment are and whether we need to see shoes in them or expand them based on positive usage.
Absolutely. So we've addressed in our policy that we intend to have an annual review. Well, the unit supervisor, myself, or whoever's in charge of it at that time, would be required to gather all that data. It would collect everything from how many deployments they had, what were the different calls for service that they were used on, or the different incidents, flight times, training hours, and obviously case use for when they've been successful and when we've been able to either reduce officer response times or officers to even respond to a call. So an annual report would be done to look at all of our costs, all the use cases and and such, so.
Thank you. Another question. So you mentioned the, you know, crowd monitoring control, whatever. But and and not I'm speaking for everybody, but I can see the general populace, especially those who might protest for whatever reason. You know, in the past, there have been issues, suspected issues with Springfield Police taking information down or kind of creating like dossiers on people that they thought might be troublemakers, which inherently somewhat makes them a target sometimes. And I know that there's been a big push for culture change, but I can see, you know, there being a large fear by the general populace, is you are using these to do surveillance on people. And and to be honest, and sorry, I'm getting a little long winded, to be honest, you know, somebody who looks like me, I'm always kind of looking out because just the way people interact with me, it's like I'm treated like a criminal, and I don't want that to happen to other people. And I don't want their fear of being hurt, chastised, killed by the police being amplified by these machines. And so what, and and I I think Council Rowley kind of mentioned this, and 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 so did Council Mo. Like, what type of public outreach is going to be done to make this seem like this is a good idea? Because I I just I just really worry that as the Springfield Police is looking to build that trust that was lost for various reasons, adding something like this is not going to help. And and like I said, I'm torn because I've seen drones, drones have saved my life, have saved my soldiers' lives, have saved innocent civilians' lives. But this isn't Iraq, and it it it's it's not even Chicago. And so I'm just curious what that's going to look like as far as, you know, getting the general populace on your side when you are currently trying to rebuild your brand. So I got a little long winded.
You want to jump in on this one?
Yeah, let me just jump in there. I really appreciate that perspective, Councilor Pitts. So I think what we're doing tonight is is a big part of that. We want to be as transparent as possible. We're posting our policy. We're posting links to the state legislation and the law that dictates when we can't can't use drones. We want to be very clear about how it's regulated and when we can use it. I think we need to be transparent moving forward about when we do deploy the drones and how effective they are. And it's not just at the annual report, and we will do that if we have a call, once we roll these out and we can talk about it on social media and show its effectiveness and help build trust that we're out there doing the right thing for the right reasons. And it's also a matter of when people call and have questions and want to complain, and they think they're being used appropriately, that we look into that very seriously and get back to the people and let them know exactly what we were doing and why we were doing it. I don't think there's just one particular way we can just flip a switch and make everybody big supporters of this. But I think by consistently and transparently discussing it, sharing it, being open with our policy, training, like you said, going to public events, letting people see it, talk about it, ask questions about it, I think it's an it's an ongoing process. This is not Iraq, and this is not Chicago. But to be totally transparent, we have officers that go out almost on a daily basis, and they have people armed with firearms that run from them. It is very dangerous out there. In fact, last night, we had a situation that could have ended far differently than it did because of the great work the officers did. And this is a potential situation where a drone could have been useful. So while it's not Chicago, it's not Iraq, this technology has been reducing risk and saving lives in law enforcement in Oregon and around the country for the last several years. And so it's it's a tool I feel very strongly about, but I also feel very strongly about the fact that we have to use it right, and we have to do it in a manner that generates trust in the public.
All right, thank you. My last question.
Did you want to jump in here?
You know, I can wait for Councilor Pitts, and then I'll just summarize.
Very good.
Yeah, and and my last question is simple. Will this footage be allowed to be used in court to potentially support or negate a case?
So to to answer that question, it's it's the the wording, I guess, to support or negate. It's evidence is evidence. So if the drone is used to record anything during an incident and that case goes to trial, then it's just prevent presented in its true unedited version, just like our body cameras and in-car videos. So to whatever value it adds to one side or the other, it cannot be manipulated, it cannot be withheld. You know, we it just, if we take a photo in an investigation, we have to provide that photo as evidence to either side. If we take video in any fashion, same thing, and so the same rules apply with the with the drone camera and drone video.
So if I can put that in different words, Brian, is that, would that be something like, if it's, it could be evidence that the person didn't commit a crime and can be used to help that person just as much as it could be used to prosecute?
Absolutely. Yes, the drone video footage can provide us information that we wouldn't have on the ground that can give us information that somebody is not a suspect or is not involved, or to help us locate the person who who is. So it goes both ways equally. Yes, that's correct.
Damian, did you have anything else? Okay, thank you. Nancy?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I really appreciate this feedback this evening. I I appreciate your candor, and I appreciate you wanting to reach out to your constituents. I just wanted to kind of let you know kind of where I weighed in on this, if if it matters. I was talking to Chief Shearer about this, and for one, I have absolute confidence in in Chief Shearer and and his decision-making. We, to me, this conversation tonight is just a a beginning step of having a larger conversation about the use of this technology. And so the natural first step for that the chief and I talked about was, let's let's bring this to the council. Because we know that although this is, I believe, could be a very helpful tool for our department, I could understand that there will be some people that will have some misgivings about it. So that's kind of thing thing one, but I also really see some potential in this technology, especially in the circumstance of our officers being put in harm's way. That is always very worrisome for me. I think that would probably be really the worst nightmare that I could even conceive of is getting that phone call of one of our officers being injured or 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 killed in the line of duty. And I I just, I I feel like if we can find a technology that that could help mitigate that for our officers, for our community members, that has some real potential. You know, some of these drones can be equipped with audio features where we can communicate with people from a safe distance. And the incident that Chief Shearer referred to, I mean, this, that would have been a really helpful tool to have. I mean, I guess like my kind of my last comment is overall just expectation of privacy in today's very modern world. I, you know, as I navigate the world, I almost always assume that I'm on camera somewhere. When you factor into traffic cameras or people's Ring doorbell, or or maybe I've just been watching way too much CSI. But I I I do make an assumption that, you know, when you're at any kind of event, people with their own phones will be recording. And, you know, not to say that that's, oh, well, then let's just add another thing, but I'm just saying, you know, it's this, this is the world that we kind of live in. We all, you know, carry cell phones. They record. I mean, anybody that talks talks about wanting to purchase something, it'll show up in your new, your Facebook feed, you know. So there's some creepy parts of technology that we all have to kind of be wary of. But I think that this, especially handled in consort with the city of Eugene, you know, they've already kind of, they're ahead of us in this path. They they've blazed the trail a little bit and vetted out some of these issues. And I and I really do appreciate that she sure is taking a regional and collaborative approach to issues such as this, and so that's into my comments.
Thank you, Nancy. Marilyn?
I had one question, and that was, are, would these be available for use if we need, if we were trying to find somebody in a search and rescue situation as opposed to a, as opposed to a crime situation? But search and rescue or somebody's lost or something, is it, would these be available for that kind of use?
Yes, absolutely. That's definitely one of our intended uses is to collaborate with, like, the fire department, Lake County Search and Rescue. The Sheriff's Department and Eugene PD are already utilizing them with their their fire and EMS groups to assist in any way. They're they're commonly used, honestly, even with the fire department just battling blazes because it gives a perspective for the fire commanders to know how to how to tackle a thing. So yes, you know, it can be so difficult to be on the street, driving around, trying to find a a lost person, a dementia patient. And and God forbid, I've been on a number of missing children's incidents, and and it's tough to try and look in every nook and cranny. And so this does give us the capability, just just a little bit more technology to hopefully give us that little bit extra that we need to to make a find. So absolutely, that is one of our use case intentions.
Thank you.
I and I've got a a couple of questions here. One of the big thing, I heard you mention the annual report a couple of times. What I would like to see is that you guys just release that report. You know, I don't know what's planned to be in it. But, you know, the the challenge or the question that we're going to have around data like this is around transparency and how open we are about it. So when I listen to the comments, you know, I'm like, we should just release it when it's available.
Yeah, honestly, I I mean, the chief and I will talk about that. But I, with what I've seen with how Eugene does it, I I think it's actually an exciting opportunity. They've been, they've been actually able to present how their caseload use, their deployment numbers have just gone up and up because each year that they've done that, we find another way to use them effectively for the community. And so I think it's a good idea, so.
Yeah, and the other piece and that I would love, and, you know, Nancy, you and I can work on it, is maybe we count six months out from here, right? And once we start deploying this drone, we start, these drones, we start coming back and sort of talk about what that use looks like. Again, I kind of, when I'm listening to the rest of the council, I'm hearing sort of a question about, okay, we've got the first report, now what? And just to have that part moment when we kind of pull back together and go, okay, what are, how are we actually using it? How many opportunities do we have? The the, glad she, Chief Shearer.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, the the annual report, I mean, the idea behind that, behind this, you know, one-year pilot project is to do exactly what you're talking about. Report back at the end of the year when we use it, how often, successes, failures, lessons learned. Do that in a transparent manner that helps inform us and guide us on if, how, or when we're going to expand on this or not in the future.
Yeah, and and when I look at that, when I look at the sort of the policy around it, and I don't know that you guys have an answer for it tonight, the the big concern isn't going to be around looking for, you know, lost kids or lost elderly, right? It's going to be about sort of privacy protection and people specifically out using the First Amendment rights. And that's probably the biggest question I think people are going to have. And I don't know if it's like, and that's probably the biggest issue where where, you know, we have the propensity to, you know, maybe over capture people's data if you want to. And may, and I guess the question that I have is, when you hit those situations, right? Is there enough written in this current policy that allows the command staff to really pull back and look at that? Look at those situations and kind of go kind of debrief, take lessons learned from that deployment? Those are specifically those incidents that I think you probably got to look at the most.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. You're right. Those are the high visibility, high impact, high concern areas that the general public is going to have. And of course, we know that's an extremely sensitive topic. And if we were to have a large crowd incident today that would escalate to the point where we had probable cause crimes were occurring and had to deploy the drone, that's when we're going to thoroughly debrief it. After action report, enter all that into our annual report and document that so we can share it with with yourselves and the and the public.
And I think the last comment I have is, and we're running into this data with body cam data as well, right? Like, one of the, one of the concerns really is, right, we we have a barrier between where the data is to see what happens, right? And where the public actually is, and maybe long term, you know, my question is how do we sort of flip, flip that, flip the script a little bit, if you will, right? So that instead of asking the questions, you know, like, hey, I got to file a report, I've got to go get to the police, and the police are going to tell me that everything's fine. You know, find find a way to sort of share more of that information upfront, where we're just constantly saying, no, we're using this in a in an appropriate manner. And I I and I know it's maybe too early to have an answer to that question, but I think that's probably something we need to be start to start thinking about. Marilyn?
A real quick comment. When we went through the Citizen Police Academy, we were given scenarios for different things would occur within policing in different venues and different situations. I'm thinking if it would be possible, when you got to the point of where you were putting this information in front of the public in the in an open house or something similar, if you had a training video from a drone that was not from a specific case, but it was a training video to show what would, what would be the reason, this particular reason for the drone to go up? What did the drone cover? What was the, what would have been the training result? Just an example to show people what would prompt it, how it would work, what would be the final part? As just as a scenario, a working scenario in front of the public, that they could actually see how it took place. And it might answer some of those questions for them.
Yeah, I like the idea.
All right. Any last minute questions before we let the the folks go? Really great presentation. Really appreciate the time. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and then we will reconvene in 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 sixty seconds on this very same meeting link. I'm going to adjourn the work session, and then we'll give, we'll wait, wait a minute before I start the next round. And then we'll give, we'll wait, wait a minute before I start the next round. AJ, are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
Leonard, did you make it back? And Damian, did you make it back? I'm assuming Steve, you're back as well. I'll look at. All right, I am, I'm getting thumbs up. It's like we're launching to the moon tonight. I'm going to call a regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
All right, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
The flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic
Republic.
For which
For which
One nation
And
Under Indivisible
Indivisible With liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us online to please keep yourself on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There will be two times this evening designated for public testimony and they will be listed as business from the audience in public hearings on the agenda. If you're joining us with a tablet, smartphone, computer, or, or wish to speak during that time, please use the raise hand feature when that item is called. When you're called on, please state your name, in Ward or general location for the record. First item, please.
Mayor, the first item is under Springfield upbeat. Item number one, mayor's recognition. Human trafficking awareness and prevention proclamation. And mayor, this is your item.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a proclamation to read and then I will announce um, some material about an upcoming event. Whereas human trafficking is modern day slavery and claims millions of victims worldwide with global profits approximately a hundred and fifty billion. Whereas that Interstate five corridor bisecting Eugene Springfield is a significant active corridor for human trafficking as described and recognized by local subject matter experts. From the fields of victim services, social services, law enforcement and legal justice that are currently engaged in combating trafficking activity. Whereas anyone can become a trafficking victim, victims and survivors come from every background, race, gender, sexual orientation and economic status. The common denominator for the victims is vulnerability due to factors such as unstable homes, lack of resources and social isolations. Whereas local officials and organizations in Springfield, Oregon are involved in a far reaching work to prevent local trafficking through coordinated efforts to raise awareness of trafficking and provide ongoing education and information on local trafficking that will pre- prevent and eliminate human trafficking. I, Sean Man Gordon, Mayor Springfield, do hereby recognize January twenty twenty-two's human awareness traffic, uh, awareness and prevention month. And note that Springfield, Oregon proclaims its support for all the efforts to inform our businesses and citizens about human trafficking and engage in activities that will lead to reporting to local officials about activities that are a part of enslavement and trafficking of any human being. Um, and I'm going to group, we were asked, well, the, the group that brought this board was one of the local Rotary Clubs. It was Springfield Rotary. They are having an event this Wednesday and I'm good. So um, and we are all invited to join that the chiefs from Eugene and Springfield are joining uh, the vigil on Wednesday. It is at five PM at the Gateway Credit Union on Gateway Loop. Um, and there'll be a couple of presentation, a couple of speakers, including the chiefs, one of the Rotary District Governors and somebody who was fortunate to be identified and, and rescued. Um, and then they were about five fifteen, they will, we will march to Gateway uh, Road and just line the sidewalk between Applebee's and the roadside grill to bring awareness to the problem. So if you're interested, please come down and uh, join and support this uh, important event.
What time and where again?
Five PM and it's meet at the Gateway Credit Union on Gateway Loop. So it's
Thank, thank you.
All right. Perfect. Um. Next item, please.
Here, the next item is the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent counter.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so it's been moved by Counselor Pictionary and seconded by Counselor Mo to approve the consent calendar. Uh, Neil, could you call the roll call, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Hi.
Motion passes six zero. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearing. You have one public hearing this evening. Public hearing number one. Repeal ordinance from the Springfield Municipal Code, Section five point three zero zero. Sale and distribution of tobacco, tobacco products and inhalant delivery systems to minors and section seven point four five zero dash seven point four five four. Tobacco inhalant delivery system vending. Um, I'll read the ordinance in now. Ordinance number three, ordinance repealing Springfield Municipal Code, Section five point three zero zero, sale and distribution of tobacco, tobacco products and inhalant delivery systems to minors and section seven point four five zero through seven point four five four tobacco and inhalant delivery systems. This is a first reading and Nancy Jenkins and Robin Holman are here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and happy new year. Um, as Neil described, this is a first reading for an ordinance repeal of our tobacco municipal code section. Staff believes that the Oregon Department of Revenue and Oregon Health Authority have the collective resources available for utilization towards the administration of the tobacco licensing program to bring license holders into compliance and facilitate programs that could provide education, prevention and inspections with an emphasis specifically on code enforcement, but the city of Springfield does not have the bandwidth to buy. We are requesting you hold a public hearing to discuss further and answer any questions.
Are there any questions? All right. Um, then I am going to open the public hearing and anybody interested in speaking to this item, please raise your hand.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands in the queue here.
Okay. Um, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And there is no action tonight on this since it is the first reading. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, the next item is business from the audience.
Okay, if you're interested um, in speaking to the, speaking to the council, please raise your hand and we will get you up here for three minutes.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time. Um, actually, I apologize. There is one hand. Um, Mayor, the first speaker is SJ Lore. SJ, you should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Yes, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Perfect. So I live in workforce four and um, I listened to the FPD president's night on their drones and um, I just would like to uh, be the first one to state that our city police department does not need any additional tools to do their job greater. Um, I feel as if they need to not be attempting to make such drastic changes when they are already an untrustworthy department. Um, the, the public perception if the city cares to do a poll is not top of the line, unfortunately. And um, I don't think the city should be investing any more money for placing for the department when they are already struggling to um, make connections with the community. And that is all I have to say on that at this very moment. Please keep in the sense.
Thank you.
Mayor, it doesn't appear we have any other hands uh, for business from the audience.
Okay, uh, next item, please. Is there any council response before we go on? All right, let's keep going. Next item, please.
Next item is any business from the city council.
I'm looking around and, all right. Oh, actually, I did have a piece of business. Um, I did send an email uh, for, to everybody about council goal setting and it does not look like that was a good date. So the email had us um, having council goal setting on Saturday, one twenty-nine. Somebody had a conflict and if you can get out your calendars. Um, I'm going to read two more dates to you guys to see if any of these two days will work. Of the two other dates that we know will work are Saturday two five and then Saturday two twelve. And it would be from, we're thinking nine to four. Joe's looking very confused.
Which month?
I'm sorry, February.
Okay. Well, you said two five and, and what else?
Uh, two twelve.
I'd have to go look at the counter to be able to tell you.
Okay, so um, could you go snag your calendar right now so that we can?
Mayor, I have no conflict.
I'm good with either one.
Do we know what hours this is going to be?
Probably nine to four-ish on the, and I know.
I've got a conflict both days.
Do, is a, is there a time that works better for you or is there?
Um, the twelve, the twelfth would be better.
Okay, um, can we short, is there, could we shorten it on one end or on the other that would work out?
Um, if I, yeah, if, if either way, I, even if I took a lunch break and left, but now I can, I can work it out.
Okay, okay.
But, but definitely not the fifth, but def- the twelfth works.
The twelfth is the best day for me. I have a conflict in the morning on the fifth, but the twelfth would be fine. And just so you all know, I was the person who was left. The twenty-nine was like the one day in January that I couldn't do.
I believe the text message said I had already bought the Airbnb.
Yeah, yeah. So just for the, then the whole public will know. My spouse Terry's birthday is on the thirty-first of January. Mine is on the seventh of February. So we tried to do something like in the between, so.
Well, that was the weekend. There was no council on Monday night too, so it was a good weekend.
Yeah, so I was like, this is, this is a fair free weekend and then I was like, Sean, nice show.
So, so.
So Joe, did you say the, the two twelve was bad for you or?
Mine's just the opposite. I, I'm not even in the state on the twelfth, but I hear I'm on the fifth.
Okay, so we're going to Plan C now. We are on Plan C. This is what Corey started.
February is not, not good.
And I Uh, it's probably going to be March. I believe Nancy or Neil, that um, I think we thought that um, the facilitator was available on any weekend in March. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor. Currently, all the Saturdays in March work.
Okay, so.
Is this, John, Sean, real quick, is this, is this open to public right now?
Open to the public, like
Can the public, can the public hear us?
Yes. So
Okay, so we need to be cautious about what we're doing and where we're at. So.
Yes. So look at your, I'm going to have uh, Nancy's going to put out a doodle poll for people's availability for those Saturdays and then we'll select it from there. Because otherwise, we've got way too many calendars going on. Okay. Thank you for your patience and your flexibility. Damian?
So um, if we push it back, is that going to affect our ability to get certain things done? Uh, the reason I, yeah, uh, the reason I say it, I mean, I know that three seats are up for reelection potentially. Uh, and I, and I don't know if that's going to affect anything. Uh, but I, 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 I hope we don't push it back so far that things that, because I mean, pushing it back a month, there's a lot that can be done in that month to make things better and I just, I don't know. Uh, personally, the sooner the better. I, I can't do the fifth. But uh, and, and I respect everybody else's time, but I just, I don't want to push it back. And to be honest, if if we have to wait for facilitator, then maybe we just don't have one. I mean, I, I understand the purpose of one, but I'd rather get things on the books and get things moving so we can support our citizens than to wait on a facilitator personally.
Well, um, I don't, I think we'll be okay as long as we get it done in, in March. Um, one thing that, one of the big things that will come out of this is probably a list of six to eight priorities for Nancy to get done this year. Um, but some of those we already know and we've already talked about as a group, right? So like the fact that Blue McKenzie or uh, Glenwood is probably going to be on that list is probably not going to change. So um, I said, I do have your same sense of we've got to have the co- we've got to get the conversation done. Okay, so Nancy will send out the doodle poll and then we'll figure it out from there. All right. Next item, please.
Mayor, next item is business from the city manager. Item number one. Springfield Utility Board Payment in Lieu of Taxes Agreement. Nathan Bell is here for the staff report.
All right, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the item in front of you this evening is a request for a motion uh, to authorize the city manager to execute a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the Springfield Utility Board. Um, a little background on this, uh, this agreement was last negotiated in two thousand and three. At that time, it had a, a pretty complex methodology for calculating that pilot uh, fee and I won't go into that detail. But at that time, uh, it was roughly the equivalent of four and a half percent of, of some gross electric retail revenues. Uh, since that time, we've seen a, a steady decrease in that pilot revenue as a percentage of the gross electric retail revenue. Um, uh, all the way down to a three point four percent in the most recent fiscal year. So there's been a recognition by both organizations that the pilot uh, has become misaligned with its intended purpose. Um, attachment one is a uh, new uh, pilot agreement. Uh, we engaged sub back in early twenty twenty-one and uh, negotiated a new pilot fee of, of a flat fee of five percent of gross electric uh, retail uh, revenues. Uh, that falls in line with the norm of what we've seen with our peers uh, across the state. And uh, under the old methodology in uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the pilot revenue generated was roughly one point eight million dollars. Uh, under the new methodology, that pilot revenue would have been roughly uh, two point seven million dollars. So roughly an increase of nine hundred thousand dollars uh, to our general fund and that will be ongoing. And then something I just want to note is uh, it, it's typically not related to the pilot, uh, but sub also provides um, billing services for our storm drainage and sewer programs. And as a result of this misalignment, uh, sub has now been artificially suppressing that billing fee uh, to the city. With this new negotiated uh, pilot agreement, they're going to return to the original IGA and, and bill uh, at the rate that uh, that uh, agreement set out. That was last been shooting in two thousand and three as well. Uh, last year, our billing service fees were roughly two hundred thousand dollars spread across our uh, utilities. Um, under uh, the methodology laid out in the intergovernmental agreement that dictates this, we're going to see those billing uh, service fees uh, roughly double to four hundred thousand dollars. Again, those will be paid by the uh, storm sewer, or I'm sorry, storm drainage and sewer uh, programs. So we're roughly going to see a, a net to the city as a whole of seven hundred thousand dollars. And uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn on the Q and questions.
Nate, could you just clarify? Sometimes we refer to pilot programs. When you say pilot here, it's the acronym for payment in lieu of taxes.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Um, are there any other questions? All right, so I think we're going to have a motion here. All right, is somebody ready to make a motion?
I am. I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Springfield Utility Board.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Pictionary and seconded by Counselor Mo. Uh, Neil, could you call the?
Yes, Counselor Pitts. Hi, Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Hey.
Motion passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
No further business. Thank you.
Any business, uh, I'm sorry, business from the city attorneys are next item. Item number one historic commission membership. Mary Bridget Smith is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight with a item for your consideration to change the municipal code. This is follow up uh, from previous council direction to have a consistent number of members across your boards, committees and commissions to nine people. The historic commission is, um, their information is codified in the municipal code. They're currently allowed for seven members, so we're asking to that to increase that to nine to be increased, to be consistent with the other boards, committees and commissions. Um, this is a first reading tonight for the ordinance, so no action tonight, but I'd be happy to take any questions you have. And then if you're all right with this, this item will move forward for a second reading on consent at your next regular meeting.
Are there any questions? Damian.
Hi, uh, other than being, you know, consistent with the other boards and commission, what other purpose would have in more members serve and by having nine, how will their mission change or what missions will they potentially receive? If they do have nine people.
Their mission wouldn't change or the purpose of the committee wouldn't change. It's just merely for consistency to have the same number of members on this commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe.
And I wanted to add a little bit to that, if I could, a little historical background with, I think Sean and I and Christine Lundberg were on, we talked about all the different committees. Damian and the size of them. And I think that number that nine we fell on was kind of a sweet spot. So we make sure we had a a very large, nice, diverse group for each one of them instead of four or five of people that are strictly interested in just that one particular topic, but try to get as many viewpoints as possible, but still still remain reasonable as far as size is concerned, but it's a convenience number, you know, for sure. Is that what you recall, Sean?
Uh, that that is accurate. Any other questions?
Okay, then this item will be back before you for adoption later in the month.
Perfect.
And no other business from the city attorney. Thank you.
All right, it looks like we are done for the evening. Uh, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. We are adjourned.
Good.